penalizing the establishment when no one is there and it's always an extra half hour. We used a little discretion there, however, we could do this about it.
Okay, the next license we're gonna hear is for Miettiara Horn, First Herb Incorporated. Is anybody here for that establishment representative? Come on up, sir. You can speak right into the microphone.
The council president, he's, um, this particular license comes up to the municipal, uh, government, um, one of his special conditions that was in place for several years now. He detected the voluntness in court evidence to, uh, sure, uh, you recommend it to be a condition of these special conditions. Um, just to see if who argues the principal party about it continues to present here. Um, my understanding, I spoke to him personally, but I look at the technical voluntness as he has, um, no objection to the consideration of these special conditions, um, on the license.
Thank you. So, does he say anything to sir?
No, I, I, sorry, I accept the condition.
You accept the condition? Okay, thank you. Can we be canceled?
I would make the most interesting, continuing the conditions as certain places established.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council vice president Egan?
Yes.
Council member Fleming?
Yes.
Council member Barladi?
Aye.
Okay, number three, is Laco Mosa Incorporated? Is anybody here for Laco Mosa yet? Come on up, sir.
Yes, this is council president, members of council. Um, this particular matter, the principal, uh, decision, uh, Desto, uh, we here. We have a court, uh, certified translator who's the care of, who's going to translate for us so that he understands the, the Desto's, uh, needs, uh, made this decision. Uh, but again, it's a benefit of the council and the record. This again is a license that has special conditions on for several years. Um, these, uh, police departments have recommended it to be a condition of these special conditions. My understanding, likewise, the license is a great, like, special condition, uh, on, uh, the, uh, I didn't need to report this, this, uh, council, I mean, I had ten services for that, and, uh, there were gun police acting here, uh, before you, you know?
That is correct.
And, uh, it seems like, uh, I think it would be certain, uh, to me, uh, what I read, uh, this part of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. I really think that, uh, yeah, it's not really good. Those signs, uh, want to do jobs, trying to keep, but I thought that, uh, security people that are moving to see the job, having a good job, um, I think, uh, good work on that.
Good. Thank you.
Motion? Second?
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council vice president Egan?
Yes.
Council member Fleming?
Yes.
Council member Barladi?
Aye.
Okay, number three, is Laco Mosa Incorporated? Is anybody here for Laco Mosa yet? Come on up, sir.
Yes, this is council president, members of council. Um, this particular matter, the principal, uh, decision, uh, Desto, uh, we here. We have a court, uh, certified translator who's the care of, who's going to translate for us so that he understands the, the Desto's, uh, needs, uh, made this decision. Uh, but again, it's a benefit of the council and the record. This again is a license that has special conditions on for several years. Um, these, uh, police departments have recommended it to be a condition of these special conditions. My understanding, likewise, the license is a great, like, special condition, uh, on, uh, the, uh, I didn't need to report this, this, uh, council, I mean, I had ten services for that, and, uh, there were gun police acting here, uh, before you, you know?
That is correct.
And, uh, it seems like, uh, I think it would be certain, uh, to me, uh, what I read, uh, this part of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
I really think that, uh, yeah, it's not really good. Those signs, uh, want to do jobs, trying to keep, but I thought that, uh, security people that are moving to see the job, having a good job, um, I think, uh, good work on that.
Good. Thank you.
Motion? Second?
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council vice president Egan?
Yes.
Council member Fleming?
Yes.
Council member Barladi?
Aye.
We have ordinance four zero three, the ordinance unauthorized convenience, uh, conveyance of certain property to the public for education on lot one ninety-one zero one, lot one zero three, lot, lot two eleven, lot forty-one. Anybody wish to comment on this ordinance, four zero three? Anybody from the public? Second?
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council vice president Egan?
Yes.
Council member Fleming?
Yes.
Council member Barladi?
Aye.
Four zero four, a bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements for the water system buying into city department and county mills at St. Louis, uh, appropriate two million, two hundred sixty thousand, one hundred eight, therefore, in forthright efficientness of two million, one fifty-two bonds or notes combined as the cost thereof. Would anybody from the public wish to comment on ordinance four zero four? Yes, sir, Mr. Cradville.
Good evening, members of council, Charles Cradville, sixth ward, New Brunswick. Uh, I wanted to ask, is anyone aware of the total debt load that the city currently has?
I don't have the percentage, but it is, um, I'm assuming, or, uh, I'd have to give that to you.
Okay, is it more than a hundred million or more than ten?
More than ten million, um, I believe it is.
And then, uh, I guess probably won't have this figure, but I'd also like to figure for how much debt the city has posted for, um, construction, like, the parking authority, um, is there a, uh, ballpark that figures?
Ballpark, uh, can be done, and that statement reflects gross net debt, and, uh, um, that's, uh, that's , uh, after all, in some time, but, uh, I don't know about this.
Okay, and, uh, result, uh, it's true, my question to me that I don't support this, I think we obviously have to invest our water system here, it's a good thing. Um, can somebody tell me that I thought we had already borrowed money to do the phase two improvement at the cost, is this additional money on top of this already been borrowed, where, uh, when, uh?
Additional money.
And, and I guess why wasn't it all done, uh, at once?
Uh, we just, a couple of years ago, we decided to break the, um, uh, improvement into two phases. First phase, uh, renovated and replaced the variable frequency drives of the low water pump station with second phase, and then replaced pumps and motors, replaced roofs, um, uh, included ventilation, both built in, um, it was the, uh, preferred way to take, uh, pack over the total renovation to low.
So, we did the property, sold the property in two phases, and these two phases have been getting, uh?
We need some supplemental money to add to the, the pot of money that we've set up, set up for this.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you. Four zero five, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council vice president Egan?
Yes.
Council member Fleming?
Yes.
Council member Barladi?
Aye.
We have four zero five, we were hit through amended supplement to devise their ordinance on the city project, chapter ten, vehicles in traffic, passengers drop off and pickup zone. Would anybody in the public wish to comment on this particular ordinance? Second?
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council vice president Egan?
Yes.
Council member Fleming?
Yes.
Council member Barladi?
Aye.
And, uh, any ordinances on first reading? We have resolutions four fifty-four, through, four ninety-four, with a couple of them that we kept out. All numbers ready?
Seventy-five and seventy-two.
Omitting sixty-five and seventy-two. Would anybody from the public wish to comment on any of the resolutions, please? Yes, Mr. Cradville?
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville, number, uh, four and the five-seven. Can somebody tell me what the grant is gonna be used for, is, uh, just police officer salaries?
This is fifty-seven?
Yeah, Edward Byrne, Justice six, six, six.
Uh, J. Two, uh, something you can ask? Uh, since this is, uh, the five word, uh, you cannot use salaries, but just the application of five words, and five, uh, line up, uh, as they were.
Is this to pick them out, because they're active?
You said they're active.
It's already been signed, I'd say it's a little more than I'd have.
Okay. Um, can someone explain what the number nine is, N D six-two, uh, zoning ordinance, like dealing with the C five, this one?
This is required by state law, you're letting the zoning ordinance, uh, send twenty words, then take one out and put it back, uh, right in the base.
Right, and so why are we, why are we paying?
We put the percentage of the, uh, ten words, uh, considering information, and, uh, we live in full distance of the league, uh, taverns and parks, and section, uh, U S law.
What section like that?
Think over, uh, that's, uh, a little.
Okay, so, to be clear, the C five zone is only, uh, on U one? If only zone will be affected?
Uh, the, uh, C five A zone is a highway commercial zone, as the Hamilton said, uh, it's among, uh, one area, uh, that's the only, uh, section in the city where it works in, in weeks, uh, taverns other committed use, uh, that's the, uh, extent of the, uh, which, uh, that's the word.
Thank you. Um, I have to ask about the one that N D six-four, number eleven, is the, uh, hearing officer for Ronald Belafonte's, uh, disciplinary hearing. Why is it that Mr. Belafonte has gotten his hearing, yet Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Alorke were both also suspended without pay, have been, now Mr. Alorke for six months? Why has their hearing has not even been scheduled, but his hearing has already been put through the process?
So, the city, the, uh, is not waiting for any of that, and other law enforcement?
So, the city is waiting for the attorney general's office in both of those cases?
Well, I believe what he's saying is that the, the Belafonte case is an internal thing that didn't involve outside, you know, criminal investigations, these other things are, so they have to go first and then decide who to elect, I believe.
So, that is a requirement? You must, you must wait to hold the hearing until after, what?
It's a requirement? It's, it's, part of the requirement, in part, is because if you have a person who starts, has to testify, uh, to, to contribute his rights, uh, having to testify, and then have to go testify to, uh, use against the, uh?
Okay. Okay. Number one, uh, N D seven, oh, I'm sorry, uh, N D seven, eight, number twenty-five. Emergency repairs to the city's water system mains, can somebody tell me where this is and why it's part of the emergency, like that?
The council vice president, we could have bid every year for a contract for, uh, emergency repairs through our water system distribution mains. Uh, we had one of the worst winters of re- of record, and subsequently, we had one of the worst, uh, main break seasons of record. We went through our contracted amount early on, and I've asked the amended contract to provide emergency coverage through the rest of the year.
And then, the, the last one would be the R Town grant, what is that, uh? Number eighty-nine, number thirty-six, ends in eight-nine?
Uh, who would like to speak on that? If you have something dual to state here, I mean, is, is the Dallas thing that you're having, that you, uh, push, uh?
Um, Mr. Cradville knows, I know he was, of course, on his block, uh, the Jewish playhouse, including the production of Our Town, including a production called Our Town Now, which is, uh, based, uh, in south of New Brunswick, these are local, uh, New Brunswick actors, uh, this is part of the city's government, supporting artists, uh, in town, and we are, uh, providing a grant to them to support this production.
Uh, New Brunswick today wrote about Our Town.
We have provided arts supports grants for, uh, both crossroads theater, uh, the, uh, cultural center
and Jewish street's, uh, playhouse, uh, in, in previous years, not structured exactly like this, but, uh, uh, similar, uh, arts support.
Thank you.
Okay, and I, I did have the pleasure of attending the, the show this weekend, The Our Town Now is excellent, and everyone deserves a few credits for being involved in it. It was great, it was, it was really well done, and I, I was a fan of it. Uh, I just wanna ask though, so that means that the money's already been spent, right? This is ten thousand dollars, it's already been spent, or is this a new, uh, effort to, to do this play back again?
No, it's going with the, the current effort, uh, the money hasn't been spent, because we haven't counter, uh, proved to get the whole, uh, the, uh, costs of both production of, uh, Our Town Now.
So, I guess, we invested.
But, uh, is, uh, how, how ever, is there any money, if we're given to do a year of spending, however late, can you say?
Okay, well, I thought it, I thought it was a great play, um, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Anybody else wish to comment on the resolutions? Only your resolutions, please. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Anthony, I've been attending to George Street, uh, I wanted to ask you about that, uh, group one, uh, rezoning, I can't, I can't find it, uh, the number, um, but I, I certainly don't know what I'm talking about.
Number nine?
Never, never talked about it, I, I was under nine.
Oh, we just spoke about it.
Yes. Um, so would that include, uh, On the Border and Hula Hands on Route One? Those are both on Route One.
As far as what's, you know, the, the Sears property is, uh, to, uh, the river, um, close, most of the close sides of the highway there, where typically see the, uh, highway oriented, uh, restaurants in that area.
But this would not affect any of their restaurants, or, or habits?
No, restaurants are in committed use, uh, in the area, it's just affecting, uh, establishments that are just simply bars, or, or have, it would not affect restaurants.
Are there, uh, frontiers and bars on, uh, on Route One?
Not in Route One, sir.
No.
Uh, and then my other question, I mean, uh, sorry, I have not had this, uh? It's one of, um, having to do with the fire museum, uh, the Unity Square Fire Museum, I was wondering if that is still going to be, um, completed by, uh, this, uh, I, I, I remember that that was ever involved.
You see, the, uh, the capitary was having a grand opening with Mr. Laco, if you'd, if you'd come back?
The Unity Square offices have been open for about three weeks now, at the ground floor level. Uh, it is the second floor level, that'll be the fire museum, uh, and the rough, um, fitting out of that space is complete, but the, uh, finer, uh, museum work, uh, will be, uh, later taken.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions? Second?
Second. And I need to, uh, say one for you, some others.
Thank you. Number four?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council vice president Egan?
Yes.
Council member Fleming?
Yes.
Council member Barladi?
Aye.
Okay, uh, now we're gonna move to the, uh, public portion of the meeting, public discussion. If anybody has anything to address the council, now's the time. Uh, we are under a five-minute rule, when you get up and address the council, uh, and that's only when you're speaking, we stop the clock when, when you dialogue, to let everybody know. So, anybody who'd like to come up and address the council, or who's got this time? Name and address, please.
Keith Jones, fifty-sixth Avenue, uh, I just wanna read a couple things real quick. Uh, I have to be under four minutes, hopefully.
Yeah.
Coordinate the, okay, cool. Coordinate the Thanksgiving turkeys, uh, distributed annually to over twenty different city organizations, assisting distributing each year over six hundred toys to children in the city during Christmas holiday season. Works within the New Brunswick school system on fire safety, public education, rare days, red cross America, recreation. Works for Robert Wood Johnson and the Civic League in New Brunswick on their annual field day in the city, use at Pontry Park, passionate work with the city's youth and the seniors of New Brunswick. Works with the Huff Teen Center on programming with the youth, works with Y S F summer programming on their annual field day. Twenty-eight years of service, of excellent service in the city of New Brunswick. He's also a father, uh, he's also a friend of mine, and none of this was mentioned in, uh, the witch hunt that took place, and that is still taking place, uh, prior to or after the unfortunate accident that took place with, uh, Fire Director Rawls. And what you have here today is, uh, family and friends, you have, uh, faith-based leaders, you have community leaders, you have, uh, people who see and know this man for the stand-up man that he is, the character that he possesses, and, and we're here to support and, uh, stand with Director Rawls, and let the public know, let the media know, uh, let the talking heads know that we won't stand and allow for this man's character to be assassinated for what was clearly an unfortunate accident. Uh, I think everybody in this room are still praying with the, the kids and, and the families of the children, uh, for speedy recovery, uh, it's an unfortunate situation. I think that the biggest, uh, concern should have been, where was he pressing on? That was my, uh, concern. Not whether this man was drinking, not whether this man was texting, not whether this man was speeding, and before any of those facts came out, we wanted justice for this guy, we wanted him locked up, we wanted his job, and this is, this is ridiculous, and we allowed his salary was put in an article that had nothing to do with the accident whatsoever. You know, so, we're here today, and it was national news, I mean, this is all national news, this, and we allowed this to happen. So, uh, what you have in this room that all, mostly these people got here at five o'clock and five thirty, and they sat here till it was almost quarter after seven now, just as quiet as they wanna be, looking good, smelling good, and we're here to support, and that's the, that's, when we will, I want this to continue, I want this to, for everybody to continue coming to these council meetings, I don't want this just to be a one-time thing, where you come, stand for, uh, our guy, and, and then we go back to letting, uh, just anybody rip them up, rip their character up. Uh, Robert Rawls is, his profession is to run into burning houses and save others, no matter what color you are, you know? And, and, uh, we took that for granted, and we took him and tried to just assassinate this man's character. So, we, what you have here today is a bunch of people that just said, no, we're not gonna let that happen, and that goes to any publication, local or national, and that goes to any talking head that is here to assassinate this man's character, that's all.
From Elton Pittman, two ninety-one St. Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey. Uh, first I wanna start by saying, Thursday, how was the gala? I, I, I was definitely wanting to come, I mean, the mayor, you guys, thank you, that's my first thing.
What are you mad?
Oh, dude, that's how often you take it, I'll come. I paid for it.
Also, um, I wanna address the other guy that yesterday appointed to this, uh, play, Our Town, and, um, I went to see it, I, it was Saturday, uh, I went in here, I actually ended up walking out, 'cause I thought it, to me, was really the rules, you know, um, it's, it's, it's short, it's advertised on the smokescreen in New Brunswick that don't exist. How is, it's just a beautiful place, and it's wonderful, but it didn't show the other side of New Brunswick, and I thought it was really the rules. And what's ultimately what made me walk, take my family to leave and walk out of that play, and mention, mind you, my brother-in-law was in the play. My brother-in-law was actually a member in the play, but what made me leave because you guys have given history of New Brunswick, and saying this, and all types of facts in New Brunswick, you didn't even mention that New Brunswick had a black man, Al Cooper. He was nowhere in sight.
Let's be shocked here, if he didn't produce.
Oh, I'm just saying in general, okay, let's get that back.
I was wanting to be a director.
Okay, I, I mean, so a producer did something, because I looked on the wall, Al Cooper's not even on the wall.
Well, he should.
Most people wouldn't even know that he had a black man, Al, just Cooper.
I played baseball, I mean, I know that.
Okay.
I'm not saying we didn't put the play.
Okay, well, next, well, it's gonna find, and it's gonna come back, it's gonna come back to the crossroads, and it's gonna come back, they put a, put, put the one and only, first, the elec- the first elected official in the history of New Brunswick, and the only mayor in the history of New Brunswick, shouldn't you have shown some respect and put that man's name in the play? We're talking about all sorts of everything.
Brother-in-law was the one, the first, what was the mayor of New Brunswick, was she in the play? Was her mother in it, or?
It doesn't, it doesn't, I'm not, I'm not, you know, my focus is Al Cooper because I'm not a white woman, I'm a black man.
I got it.
Okay. And, uh, also, um, when it address, I think Ron, Ron Delphon is returning, right? To City of New Brunswick?
Laco?
He's returning to work on June third.
Okay, and how did you come to that conclusion?
That was a decision of the hearing officer and the city and the union submitted to the hearing officer, uh, and, uh, talked to the union, uh, asked for a hearing, uh, did not agree with our, uh, penalty that we, uh, asked for with this termination, and the hearing officer issued a thirty-day suspension.
Okay, and what would you base it with, huh?
As I said, the hearing officer issued only a thirty-day suspension, uh, did not uphold our
request for termination.
So, well, he was, Mr. Pittman threw me, he can't have the one-on-one conversation. So, so, so the, the union, they had a hearing, the hearing was, was taken out, and then they had to get his job back, okay? So, I mean, will he be returning to that department?
Uh, that's to be determined.
Okay, to be determined. So, now, how does the rules work now? Because obviously, he did nothing wrong, so, and, and.
But he said he didn't do nothing wrong, he's the people that do wrong, and then get punished, and they get, and they go back to work.
So, that would just, so, so that's, so the, uh, punishment for his actions is standard thirty-day suspension, anyway.
That, 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 did that, did that hit?
No, no.
So, what guy did?
He did something terribly wrong, he uttered, uh, a, a word that no one would.
What word was that?
I'm not gonna say it.
What else?
You gotta tell us, I told you.
So, I'll say.
No, you don't have to say.
Yeah, I'm gonna say.
Why do you wanna say?
Because, I wanna say, 'cause it's a word, I didn't invent the word.
Okay, but why, why do you need to say?
I didn't create the word.
Tell me why you need to say it.
Because that, that word has power to it, and that man used it, that man, but that man is coming back to this department, he's gonna, he's gonna continue to get a sentence, wait, let me speak, let me speak.
Hold on, hold on, I wanna go up right now, no, it's in my meeting, not in that meeting.
Yeah, I got these pins on, you have to get this word.
Listen, I'm waiting on that, not about talking.
Okay.
They wanted to terminate him, the body he recommended to terminate him, they lost in the hearing, why are you making the city to be the bad guy here, they tried to terminate him, they wanted him to be fired, that's what the administrator just said, okay? They are good about unions, the union representatives, you have to go for hearings, that's the process, collective bargaining, it's in your agreement, that's how they, that's how you negotiate, that's how people get fired, hired, when you're foreign Republican employee union, okay, whether you like it or not, it's like the play, you don't like the play, you don't like these rules either, but that's what it is.
All right, but then, I mean personally, regardless of what the city, the union decision is, my character couldn't allow me to work with a person under that situation.
Well, there might be other people like that in the city, that's what.
Are you one of those people?
Absolutely.
Are you comf- you're comfortable working with the person?
No, I said, no, I'm with you, I'm.
So, so when he returned, will you resign in your position?
Why would I resign, it's not gonna work on me, what would I resign for?
Why would you resign?
What would I resign for, what did I do?
Because, because the city is, because, because, because the city is employing, the city is gonna give a paycheck, hold on, hold on, the city's gonna give a paycheck.
You got, you got another minute and ten seconds.
All right, I'll listen, I'll listen, okay, all right, the reason why I'm focused on this, on this situation, because this is a young, this is an educated woman right here, she went to law school.
I know that.
She has degrees.
Absolutely.
This man had no reason to say, I hate that fucking nigger.
Okay.
No, because, no, because you try to turn it up, no, no, but now he's returning, now he's returning, and she has to still work with this man? She has to still work with this man?
I don't know.
You know what, you know what that word did to our people?
That was the duty.
And he's, oh, wait, wait, he's under, he's under raw supervision, there was no pins for her, nobody, not one person, he said, I hate that fucking nigger for no reason at all, that woman did nothing wrong to him, she's not, what person can't?
If you're in this room anymore, you're gonna have to leave the room, there's no mercy allowed.
I don't leave the room, but you're gonna employ him for his sake?
I'm not gonna employ him, I'm not gonna be talking.
No, he's gonna get a city check, you're gonna recommend me, but he's allowed to, what, under the city?
I'm recommending you.
You're gonna recommend me?
Yes.
I hate that fucking nigger.
Okay, now you can leave, you're done talking now, you're done.
Upstairs.
You can stay here, you're not talking to them.
Upstairs, could you support, we find a loophole, you keep him employed, that's right.
I don't want to have that.
I don't care if I don't agree with her or not. That's my sister.
Now, now you're talking.
I'm going to stand up for her. I don't care what, that's right. But hey, listen, I never hated her.
You're done talking.
I never hated her. I don't agree with what she do, but if somebody disrespect her, I'm going to stand up for her.
That's my...
It doesn't matter what color it is.
Your time is up.
It doesn't matter what color it is.
Thank you.
And Ross was aware, he was called at, and he stepped back and approved her.
Thank you.
And not one pin was brought here for her.
Anybody else wish to talk to the public, in the public hearing today? Would anybody else wish to speak? Come on, someone got to speak.
Good evening. Once again, I think that, first of all, it is great to see so many people come out.
Yeah, they come out very though.
And want to be here for, to see what the city council does and to speak up and stand up for what they believe in. And I want to say that this is now two meetings in a row that not everyone can fit in the room. We need to move this meeting to a bigger room. There's one across the street at the Freeholder Room. Is there anybody that can get to that? Can we do that?
Yes, I'm against that.
Why are you against that?
Because this isn't normal, this isn't even normal. What do you mean, everybody can't fit in the room? You could fit eighty people in this room. But there's some...
I'm saying there's folks who would... Listen, it is awkward in this room, even when there's not a large traffic. And people might not know, this room used to go deeper until the business administrator's office was built. The city's grown over time. These meetings have grown over time and we need to move them to a place where every member of public...
Thank you for the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to ask if the council has anything to say about the crime statistics? The armed robberies are up one hundred and seventy-two percent in the first three months of 2014. What can you tell us about that? Why is that happening? It wants to be a better plan.
I really don't know much about it. I just need a report about it. Someone give you a report. I'll have to hear what Captain Miller has to say about that.
I think they have to say about this, yes.
Are they, are they positive? Do you know if they're right or wrong on this, biscuits? Are they going to ensure it?
We're in the crowd now.
Where did you get it from?
From the state. The police are right, then that's what I reckon.
So is anything being done?
Are the police taking any measures to crack down on the burglaries?
They work every day.
Okay?
Well, I know it's Captain Miller's job to deal with press inquiries. And I'm a resident of Lewis Street. And on April eighteenth, I noticed that there was some police activity in my neighborhood. Door had been kicked down, undercover vehicles coming in and out all day at the seventy-two Lewis Street home. And I've asked now three times what was going on. I want to know my neighborhood and I have not gotten answers. So maybe someone has that answer tonight?
Have you sent emails for the find out?
I see you this morning on my most recent one, but I've asked three times yesterday, eighteen. It's more than one.
Again, a lot of questions. I don't completely base this on all delegations. I have to prioritize my work. I can't answer every one of these questions. As far as what happened on Lewis Street, I've indicated with another cover, another cover officer there. I wouldn't tell them what's going on there. I'm not going to comment on what happened.
You can't tell me a month later what was going on on my, on my street?
No.
Well, I think we need to debate it. I've asked many times about whether or not Oriole Development is a brand. I'm not sure. Whether or not they've met all the stipulations in the agreements they have with the city to get these longer tax exemptions. I asked them if the investigation can get through this capacity. We do that. I've asked them that response for some time now. What is your response?
Mr. Bradley? What do we have?
I was going to ask upon whether the tax evasion agreement required the affordable housing in that project. And no, it does not. I would know on the other requirements of that that it was going to be a finance department. He'd asked me simply about the affordable housing and that's not part of what a financial agreement was.
Let's be clear, the planning director doesn't know if all the stipulations would be agreed on or not.
He wasn't asked that. It was asked one specific thing. Had he answered?
You're out of order.
Yes.
There's a candidate.
Well, I hope that I can get that answer. I know I asked a lot of questions. I asked them over and over again.
You have asked that question. I know you've asked that question. And we can come back and ask you that.
Thank you very much.
Will you shake your head no for that?
On the planning director, not the finance director.
Okay.
Sure, someone has the answer.
So it's certainly about the finances we want to know about.
I'm asking whether or not they've met the stipulations in the agreement, so whatever that entails. They've agreed to do certain things in order to get this sweet deal from the city. Want to make sure they're doing what they promised.
We either have a day or a week. I'll be out here. We'll go to the next meeting. We'll get those answers before the primary.
Thank you very much. I have one last question about, I guess, something about engine fifteen. It's, it'd be a couple lines. I'm sure somebody here can answer what happened to engine fifteen.
Engine fifteen, do you know about that? Anybody from the fire department here? No? Speak on engine fifteen.
Chris, could you speak to the, I guess there was a fifteen, thirteen disabled one day on George Street a couple weeks ago?
Yes, and that engine actually blew a transmission on it. It's been repaired and fixed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Thank you. Anybody else want to address the council this evening? Yes, sir.
Address something. I...
Name and address, please.
I live at one seventy-five Ritz and I live in New Brunswick. My name is Daniel Frankoff and I've been calling to verify what's been going on with the fire chief. As I mentioned last meeting, that I was trying to get a hold of a police director. I can never get a hold of the police director and talking to him about getting more officers and getting more salaries for these officers and getting more crossing guards. Pay more salary to the crossing guards. I've been trying to get a hold of them and they never give me any verification for what's going on with the fire chief or what is, I don't know. What we should do.
So I wanted to ask you a question. You want to know about putting more crossing guards on?
Yes.
Okay.
And more police officers. Because I didn't see it on French Street. Are they bullying the Hispanic people and all these Hispanics fighting in front of the bar on French Street? I think it was Tuesday or Monday afternoon. I was walking towards my mother while I'm on French Street. And it's been going on, a lot of fighting, a lot of bullying, drunk people on the street. And I've never seen officers patrolling. That's, you know, they should be patrolling in person. I haven't seen officers on the street. I haven't been there before. And I wanted to make sure what people are doing at this point.
I think if I could just answer a couple of his questions. The police budget for this year assumes the hiring of twenty new officers. Two of each, two of each. Two of each, two of each on the payroll and eighteen of which will go through a summer police attach.
Nineteen.
You knew that?
Huh?
You knew that?
I didn't know that until you just said it. Because we need, we need more officers and causing...
I think the police department would agree with you on that.
And I've been telling, I've been trying to get a hold of the police director so I can speak to him. Because I called the secretary earlier and I told her I wanted to speak to him and make a meeting. And I wanted to speak to the mayor to tell him what's going on in this town. Because this town is ridiculous. They should get this town off. Like New Brunswick, Franklin Town should. They have better, better than New Brunswick. And it looks to me that this town is not doing anything. And it looks really ridiculous.
I'll try and get to the crossing guards question as well. But I don't mind saying this, this town is not perfect, but there's a million good things going on.
Why, why other towns?
Well, you choose to recognize or not, it's your business. We are looking at the compensation schedule for school crossing guards and we will have recommendations to the mayor for September first when there is a new school season.
Because this new school coming up, I would like to know if they're going to do like a traffic light? Because they're still speeding and I don't see any officers around Livingston Avenue and winning water cups between that area and Livingston Avenue in Texas. Because there's a lot of drug dealing going on and it hasn't stopped. And I'm seeing it like outside because I walk through my kids, taking them to, you know, I'm on full weeks vacation right now. And I've been seeing a lot of drug dealing, drinking on the street. And I don't see the officers.
Well, I assure you that Ferguson Avenue has been paralysed since the accident. I've seen a lot of cops out there myself. And there's still more we can do and we're definitely working on a better solution. And anybody agrees about the crossing guards and anybody agrees about the police and we're working to get, to straighten that out.
Can you at least put a traffic light there or at least?
It's not up to us. It's not, you have to study, done, it's the county on the road. And I know people look at us like, say, yeah, you're passing the law. But we have no jurisdiction over that road for this poor white.
Can the county do something about it?
Sure. Yeah. You go to the county board, you can all agree. Everyone that can decide whether they're talking.
At the end of this meeting, can you give me their phone numbers? I can just reach, contact them and...
Sure. If you need to, the, 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 where they need. And I believe you might have, maybe somebody might have. I think that can give us some information.
I think that at the next meeting, can we at least get a... Because the last time there was a lot of people in this building, there was more than a hundred people and they did not fit in outside when they come in to this council meeting. I think we should adjust this meeting at the next building. Because the next building is...
Move that down with consideration.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say throughout this whole situation, as council members, I know that we continue to pray for children and everybody, not just the children, but everybody. There were many families affected by that, including the director and everybody else. On that note, I just want to say that whenever something like this happens, there's always two types of situations that arise. Last time we were in here, there was news cameras all over, from every single major network. And some people looked at that at the point saying, you know what? How can I exploit this situation for my political gain? And it would have been easy for us to speak up at that time, you know, hey, I can get on the national media right now. But unfortunately, some people just look at this as a show. And after the cameras are gone, we still got to live here. And I disagree, wholeheartedly, even I don't speak directly to anybody. New Brunswick is still a great place to live. You know, sometimes we say, okay, this city is so down and stuff like that. Well, if it's that much down, you have to do something to improve your community. Plain and simple. If I know there's drug dealers in my community, I'm going to call the cops. If I know something happens in my community, I'm going to, I'm going to get on the phone right away and do something about it. We can't sit there and clean up communities.